Video person is in place, so we will call the Rockville City Council meeting to order. It is for five, it is at 6:00 PM tonight. Obviously, we had a workshop earlier. Some of those things will have reports shortly. So to that end, we would please stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have roll call. All council members and mayor present. We have our team of city staff and subordinates available. So let us start. Silence your electronic devices, please. And at this point, additions of the approval of the agenda. And there should be two items I'm going to ask to add to the agenda. One of them would be the Main Prairie Township Fire Contract. And I don't know if that's been circulated to all of us, but it's a standard, standard one that came in. And so that, we can probably just put into the consent agenda under F. So under...
E?
E. And then D-E.
E as in elephant. Okay, sorry.
Yep. And then the other one I'm going to...
So there doesn't need to be any conversation about it?
Not that I'm aware of.
It's good. Okay.
Under standard, yep. And so, having said that, and the other one I'm going to ask to have added in, and that would be under the City Engineering, item number four, under the Department Reports, Sewer and Water Rate Analysis, RFP qualifications, and see where that goes.
No, I'm not for that.
Just a second. We're not going to have an open up for discussion. All we're doing is, when we get to that point, see if we can get some consensus to have a rate, a true rate analysis done. So that's the items that we're going to add to the agenda. Motion would be in order. Or is there any other agenda items that we would like to add? Seeing none, motion would be in order. Motion would be in order to accept the agenda as presented.
I make a motion, accept the agenda as presented.
A second to that motion? I'll second it, so it doesn't die. All those are in discussion as it relates to the agenda.
I'm not in favor of adding the sewer under Department Reports. That's already been decided. It's a dead horse.
Not either. It's a done deal. There's no need to move forward.
Well, I don't believe we should. We've been in big discussions.
We can add it, doesn't mean we have to approve it.
No, no, I'm not for it at all.
And that's, that's the lack of democracy that we like get laughed at from time to time and happen once.
You're having your democracy right now, Duane.
Yeah. And so, having said that, we are in the discussion mode, but think this through, what it's going to look like to the public if you aren't going to at least allow the five of us to have a simple thing like a motion that's going to be brought forward, and it can be voted up and down at that time.
Then we got a motion on the table right now.
Yes, we do.
And we're in the discussion mode.
Yes, we are.
So we can call the question.
No, no, you don't. If it takes the ask for calling of a question, it takes two-thirds. No, it takes...
No, it takes one person to call the question. Discussion is done, we'll call the question on the motion on the table.
To, by parliamentary procedure, to call the question other than by the facilitator, it takes a motion and a second. So there are motion to go and call the question.
I would say, if I could remind you, at the last January meeting, you agreed to loosely follow Robert's Rules of Order, and that was one of the items brought up by a council member, was this calling the question requirement, two-thirds.
It does.
But you agreed to loosely follow Robert's Rules of Order. You don't have to follow it to another.
Yep. So the facilitator of this meeting tonight will go and ask, and if that's the case, that it takes a motion and a second to call the question if it's other than a facilitator. That is not up for discussion. So that's at this point. There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
You seconded it? You made the second?
No, no.
He's talking about my calling the question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The motion and a second to call the question takes a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion to call the question signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, what's the question? Make it clear to me.
Oh, so the motion is to stop the discussion of the prior thing. If it takes a two-thirds majority by Robert's Rules, even if it's loosely, takes two-thirds majority for the people to, unless it's the facilitator of the meeting. So majority, in a case of calling the question, it takes a two-thirds majority in Robert's Rules.
So we're still on approving the agenda?
No, we have to go in motion to accept the motion, and second to call the question. So the motion to call the question is what's before you right now. It's not discussion, it's just clarification. And so if you decide that you want to continue to have dialogue, you would vote against this motion.
We could call, we figured, we figured should be that's what the question is.
We'll wait until the subcommittee meeting is done with their meeting, and then we will reconvene. Okay. So the motion on the floor is to continue the question, to continue the discussion. We would then need to go and vote against it. If you want to have a question called, you vote for it. So therefore, that's the motion on the floor. I call the question. All those in favor of the calling of the question signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. It's apparently four to one or three to one. If it's four to one, it would pass. If it's three to one, it would pass. So I failed in my effort. So we will now go back to the original motion. And that is to call the question of the agenda. And what would we do then? Take off the recommended amount of, or the recommended amount of the sewer and water? Because the motion was, and the second was, to have both of them. So now you would need to go and vote against the motion. Because the motion was to accept the agenda with the two modifications. That's the motion that's on the floor at this point. And in the discussion, so I got overruled. So now we're going back to that motion. So I will call the question.
Clarification?
Yes, please.
So the motion that we're actually voting on now would be to approve the two additions to the agenda. If that gets voted down, the two additions do not go on the agenda.
That's right. Then we have to go back to carve out and just have one.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yep. So it's clear what we're voting on? And Mr. Bodie, you have that clear in your mind as we start?
Yes, sir, as much.
So all those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
And that appears to be a three to one. So that failed.
Orderly.
We're back to the agenda as it was presented to us by staff. What's the wishes of the council? We should have that Main Prairie Township.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with one addition, and that would be the Main Prairie Fire Agenda.
And that's in the consent agenda?
Yes, under E as in Edward.
Got it. Okay, you've heard...
I'll second that one.
You've heard the motion and a second to accept the agenda with the one modification under consent agenda, E as in elephant, Main Prairie Township Fire Contract. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Seeing none, passed unanimous. Okay, we are now working on the agenda. Resolutions 2020-14. This is item number six. Acceptance of the February 2020 donations. Let's take council action.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion to accept the donation.
Second it.
That is one Rockville Lions Club, $3,150.
Correct.
Motion's been by Bill, seconded by Brian, to accept the donations. Resolutions 2020-14. Discussion. Sensing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
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 Those opposed, nays. Any abstentions? None, passed unanimous. Okay. We are now, approval of the February 2020 bills. There is, I believe, one conflict of interest possibility. So what's the wishes of the council?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion to accept the bills of the month for February. All those in favor. And Jerry, the reason I was losing two, Jerry, there was one in there for your...
I will abstain from check number 019706.
Thank you very much, Jerry. Thanks. And so to that point, motion would be, is in order to accept the approval. Been advanced, there is a second discussion. Jerry will abstain on the check 19706. I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? None, passed unanimous. We are now up to item number eight, consent agenda. There are a grand total of eight. It's up on the, on the display. What's the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve, but I have a question.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Bill, please proceed.
Marty, is it, does this mean that Sterns is not coming here on a quarterly basis, or no?
He'll be here next month, according to Lieutenant.
I just want to make that clarified. Okay.
Yeah, tell him that he's going to be here next month. Okay.
I'm good.
Very good. Any other comments, discussions as it relates to the consent agenda? Sensing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nays. Any abstentions? Sensing none, passed unanimous. Department Reports, the City Engineer, Road Pavement Management Plan, and then there's an example of the city, and I will turn that over to, I imagine, Justin, unless you want to preface it, Mr. Bodie?
No, that's...
Okay. Justin, please proceed with that. And I caught the end of the RTU that you shared last month, Brian, and the recommendation that you had. I seen that, or heard that in YouTube. So, Justin, please proceed.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is just an option for you to consider. This was discussed at the RTU Committee. You have an example of this, of what a pavement management plan or report looks like in your packet. Essentially, just in summary, what it is, is it goes out, it rates all the roads. It's called a Pacer rating system. It's a one through 10 rating system. It's rating all the road segments, one through 10. And then it compiles all the data into maps and into a report, kind of summarizes where your roads are all at. And then it recommends, from there, then we essentially provide recommendations on what the appropriate maintenance method is for each roadway segment. You know, lately, I will say, the city's kind of been in fire drill mode, method on their pavements. So it's essentially just addressing, well, not completely, I shouldn't say that, but for the most part, it's addressing what's blowing up and what you absolutely have to do because the roadways are just in dire need of replacement. Now, you have done some proactive maintenance recently on doing seal coating, crack filling in the core part of town. So that's certainly a very proactive maintenance method. Basically, what that is, is like, what this plan would do is sort of lay that proactive maintenance methods out in a plan on what that would look like, how much that would cost each year, and what you would have to budget in order to do that. What it also does is, say, for instance, a roadway is rated at, say, a five, for instance, which is kind of at the low end of, if you're going to do an overlay on it, fives and sixes are appropriate for doing an overlay on it before you're doing a full reclaim on it. What the, what the plan does is it projects out, so say you can't get to that road until four years from now. It essentially reduces that rating by one every two and a half years. So essentially, in five years, it would reduce the rating from a five to a three. And that's just based on the law of averages and kind of where pavement conditions typically fall. So it's not a science, I mean, it's not an exact science, like was indicated by somebody, you know, previously. You are, you are certainly still going to have to review your roads to some extent on a yearly basis and modify that to some extent, modify your plan. Typically, what I do is look at the two to three-year group of roads that are coming up in the next two to three years and do a little bit of shuffling based on how the, how the roads have reacted to, to the winters the last few years. So it doesn't mean that these are the exact roads you're going to do every single year, and you're going to stick to it to a T. What it does do is gives you a pretty good basis for what you need to budget and what you need to plan for, for your street maintenance activities. So with that, I guess I'll leave it at that and answer any questions you have.
Okay, thanks for that report, Justin.
I, you did touch on a few of my questions. The gentleman who came up and spoke before about the roads, and I, I'm not an expert in roads. Justin, I would consider you that person. But that stuff does happen, so you do rearrange priorities, so to speak. Is that correct?
That is correct. I mean, it would still be, it doesn't, it doesn't eliminate the need for the RTU Committee to meet on a yearly basis or, you know, several times during the year and review where you're at with your roads and go out and look at it. Gene's obviously, you know, driving the roads multiple times every, every, every week. So, you know, usually, working closely with him on what he's seeing out there is important as well. So that is rearranged each year.
My second comment, and I'm sorry, this is a negative comment, but if we were to go through with this, are we going to follow it? That's a question that is true.
That's a very good point. I mean, we got the comprehensive plan that's since 2004. It's been looked at a handful of times, and it's never been updated. So it's definitely something, I mean, the, the plan that we have now is very generic, and that needs to be updated as well. And that's going to...
You're talking feasibility report that was generated by SEH? No, we're talking about the...
The road...
Strategic Plan.
Yeah, open it up. Is that, is that the one that...
Yeah, the one that you had out at the...
Open it up. Yeah, that's not...
How many years out is this looking?
Typically, we look at a 10-year, 10-year window.
Of the roads that need to be done, they were highlighted. They're there, you know?
You know, in my opinion, it's a, it's a good tool. There's no question about it. Is it worth that much money? I'm pretty cheap, so I think it's expensive. But if we use it, it's good. If we don't, then you're just throwing money down.
Well, that's my point.
That's the bottom line.
And to that end, and that is, some years ago, we had different engineering firm, and there was a substantial amount of money that was spent back in those days for the 2017 street improvement, and that was supposed to give us the pecking order and all of that. And from that was the RTU Committee that was created about that time or just prior to that. And that said, we need to have inventory. And if you recall, the meeting that was a mini city council meeting at the 400 Club, strategic planning for all of the people that are concerned about which roads are next. So we have a game plan. I think, you know, if it's using this one, or modifying this one, or starting from scratch with a new one, that's the, that's the one thing that I heard. And that was loud and clear. It says, don't sit there and surprise us. Let us know, different council members, different mayor, different administration. But it should be a game plan. This would be one unique way of doing it, and not in a three-ring spiral notebook, and then...
Yeah, because there's a spreadsheet that, that goes along with this, that isn't in that packet, that is color-coded with, with our current roads. And that needs to be updated. I mean, Justin and I talked about that. And to do that, I don't even remember, there was a rough idea what that was going to cost. Three, $4,000 roughly, wasn't it?
I would say just to go out and, you know, rate the roads and update that, you're probably in that vicinity.
Yeah, and so to spend that, this, when the RTU, when Justin presented this to the RTU, and Gene, you can argue with me or not, but this seemed to be a way more in-depth tool and a lot more visual to it. I see the, the value in this, but exactly what Bill says, it's something that we got to use. If we don't use it, then the value is nothing.
So we didn't use it here either?
Not very well. That's absolute.
So, you know, if we're not using it here, what's going to be...
But maybe we need to take a look back at why didn't we use it? Did the weather create problems with other roads, and we didn't have the finances to follow through? Why didn't we use it?
Well, that's some of it.
Well, so is to say this 10-year plan isn't going to be the same thing. And he might lay out a terrific
plan, but he's not God. We don't know what these roads are going to do in three, four years. And I'm just throwing scenarios out there.
You're right. I'm not God. I'll be the first to admit that one.
Mr. Mayor.
I read, I read that whole feasibility report. I spent day, and I just bought, had a headache at the end. But I learned more from reading that than what we had previous, because it's still, basically, what you look for on that previous part was good. We didn't follow. But here, it tells you, this is what the road would look like at this point, at this point, this point. It gave me a visual. I could go out there now, and I could probably pick out the roads where we're at just from looking and reading this. Previously, I had no clue on that. You know, it's 12 grand, but the thing is too, we just got to follow. I think with this RTU, and you know, we got over there keeping us in line there. So we can, I think it'll work okay. It would be fine.
With our finances being where they're at right now, would you see something wrong with like a three or four-year plan? Would that be a little bit more fitting for us? And would that take less in-depth study? Just asking.
I don't really think it does, because in order, in order to, I mean, you got to look at all the roads.
For sure.
And, you know, so regardless, it's kind of the same amount of work whether you look at all the roads and rate them and develop, and develop a three-year plan or a 10-year plan. It's kind of, it's kind of the same amount of work and same exercise regardless.
I sense that Mr. Bodie is going to, but before I give him the floor for a second, and that is, the question that I would have, and that is, and I'm not sending a signal to you guys for or against, but the RTU Committee that was created in the past for doing field and tours annually, or more often if it needs to be, along in concert with the council, would that then continue to, with or without the program? With the program, obviously, you would be making beforehand decisions along with our Public Works. The RTU Committee knows the pulse of this city as it relates to the roads or some of that. And I'm just trying to make sure that if we do go forward, that we don't, the, 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 how should I say, the RTU Committee are people that understand roads and that, and they know the pulse. And so they should be giving us information to the council, just like the planning and zoning does, or something like that. And that needs to be micromanaged a little bit, how those meetings, if they're going to be more structured on a time certain, but that's incidental. So before I do... Go ahead, Brian, and then we'll...
One of the things too, Marty, I don't know if you were going to touch on this, but two things with this report, is Marty and I have been talking about, coming up shortly, the RTU and the council doing a bus tour again. And if anybody else wants to ride along, so they can see, and that would help, I think Justin and I, believe we talked a little bit too about that, you going along. So collectively, could we could gather some information to compile for this? And the other part of that is I talked with Marty, if we do this report, this report would be available online to the city website. So everybody could come and take a look at it at any time and see what it is, where we don't have that available.
And that's the positive side. When you think of conveying information to the public.
So if the RTU Committee was going to make the recommendations, that could be put online too for the city, you know?
True.
Well, we could, but this, this works in a little better with their computer stuff.
So do they have a recommendation, or did I miss that?
The RTU made a recommendation to go ahead with this.
And another thing, if you look at...
We still haven't gotten Mr. Bodie, but continue. You're more important tonight. It's the five of us that deliberate tonight.
But look, and I think that report that they compiled, that feasibility, that I think all members at the RTU, they looked through that. You know, we all drive the roads. I'm not a road expert, but I got a picture, at least a picture, and I got everything telling me, this is what a road, our new roads look like, and this one yet. They'll have a general idea too, that they themselves can rate the road. It's going to make it a lot easier to comprehend which road we should go on. So I mean, that's going to really help, I think. I liked the way it was set up. I know in Collegeville Township, where I work at a part-time, every year, we take a road tour in the spring. You're bored and wish you'd drive roads and make, some of the roads, well, they're like here, they should have been worked on last year or the year before. We haven't got to either because of funding or something else came up. But at least you know where you're at. That's my saying.
Okay. So now, thanks for being patient. Mr. Bodie, please proceed.
Mr. Mayor and council members, one of the questions that was brought up by, by taxpayers, not just today, not this evening, and not just by you, is why don't we follow the plan that was prepared by the previous engineer? Now, I don't want to sit here and be a cheerleader for the previous councils, but you annexed in Rockville Township and Pleasant Lake in the early 2000s. And it wasn't that many years later, you did the first road analysis, and that was in 2007. That price tag was $13 million.
Really?
$13 million to fix our roads. Since I've been here, we've done about $1.6 million. That leaves $11.5 million left. That's a scary number. You took a bold move and doubled the road budget for 2020. You went from $250,000 to $500,000 a year. Divide that into the $11.5 million. We get the calls. We get the calls here as staff about why you're not fixing the roads. We get the calls. You're raising our taxes. You're raising utility bills. If you want to fix the infrastructure, you're going to have to pay for it. And if $250,000 isn't doing it, $500,000 is a great improvement, but you can't do $11.5 million. The question was, what roads are you going to fix next? If you don't do the rest study, which is 0.01% of the original $13 million, I think it's somewhere in that neighborhood, if you don't do this study, you're still doing fire call, 911, road repairs. We were told three years ago for a public hearing, Lake Road did not need to be fixed. Somebody videotaped the road and says, look how good it is. A year later, that road was fixed because it blew up, and the engineer warned us of that. But we got our rear ends handed to us on videotape and on Facebook and website about how good that road was. A year later, it blew up.
And the point is?
The point is, staff brings you these recommendations.
Yep.
And many times, staff is, is poo-hooed that we're not doing our job. And then council also gets, gets yelled at.
So I sense...
$11.5 million.
And so I sense that staff is strongly recommending, that's what I just heard, is strongly recommending that we go forward. The question I would have of Mr. Bodie, and that is, the funding that we had this past year, and so if it goes forward, do we have funding in reserves, or where would we get that funding to pay for this amount? If it's the, is $12,000, wouldn't that the number that was?
$12,000, yes.
Yeah. And one of the questions that I sensed was, is there, to set up the operation, if you project five years or 10 years, that's not the cost factor. It's to set up the software and the program and get it onto the...
The rating and do the analysis.
Right, right.
And put the apps together, yes.
Yeah. And so at that end, other comments or questions from council members as it relates, it's Justin attempting to answer, but you did a great job of presenting it to us. And Mr. Bodie, I didn't mean to cut you short, but I think it's, it's unique for us. The question I had is the RTU, RTU Committee in concert with the council and planning and zoning, the tours, which is open to the public, very important, so that there's buy-in. So now, other comments as it relates to this?
When is this tour going to be set up? For when?
After the, we have to first vote it up or down. But then, time, good question, timeframe?
Well, I ain't going to vote on this until, I'm saying after the tour, and I want to hear what the total RTU Committee recommends. That's why we have them, and that's who I'm listening to.
Yeah. But we have it as a city council action tonight, so we can't, we have to do something.
Table it, can't we?
Yes, you can. Yes, you can. But anyways, other comments or questions?
Justin, when, to get this thing up and running, when, what's the start date that you need?
We would want to wait until the roads are completely clear snow, which I think they are right now. So, I mean, we can do it anytime between now. We can do it anytime. If you want to table it, that's not an issue. It's just...
I, I think it's a great idea. It's a great tool, I heard. We need to use it if we do it. That's where I'm at.
Yep. Other comments, questions?
I think too, that feasibility report, if any other members in RTU get this, like I said, I read it, looked at a picture there, there'll be a black and white difference, but it gives, it gave me more information than what we had from the previous, that we had, this road should be disingayed. This is a picture too, of the RTU members, when they go out there to see the road, this is what a level five road is. And Gene can, I'm sure can state that too. You can tell right away where, where our roads are and where they would go into.
Okay, last, yeah.
Go ahead, Brian. No, you're first.
It's okay, Marty. Duane, if, if you recall, going back to that meeting at the 400 Club, and kind of getting ripped on the idea of not following our road plan.
It was not a great conversation.
And, and having, and having this updated. And some of the discussion at the RTU was, we need, we know we need to update it. So we know we got to spend some money to do that. And after Justin had presented this, Donnie just touched on it. So if you look at some of these pictures that are in examples, they, they give some pretty explicit photos of what the actual condition of the road is. So if we have a condition of the road, say, in 2020, and now we go back and look at it in 2023, we can see... in 2020, and now we go back and look at it in 2023, we can see the same area, the same road, three years later, and go, holy crap, man, that's really starting to look bad. That in itself can determine how fast or how slow we need to address that road without it blowing up like we're doing our, um, fire drill road maintenance right now. And so I, I think the value of fixing up what we had, as far as a street plan versus spending the money in here, the value was here, and that's what was
We can do that with our own camera, with our own picture, driving out there.
But do we do it? That's the thing. That's the thing. Here, we can have somebody do it. It's gonna be there. It'll be online. Any of the constituents can come and look at it.
That's the value.
And, and there is a huge value to that. Whether or not they're gonna use it, that's there, but it's there for them to use.
Yeah.
Sorry, Marty.
And there, and there would be a pecking order of which roads, and they can be modified to which roads, but at least there's a game plan of, in the foreseeable future, how many dollars are gonna be allocated towards roads. And that's the signal that I've heard for a long time. And I thought for a second we were into a budget meeting, Mr. Bodie, but that wasn't the case. Um, when we did our budgeting last year, and this one year, neck part of the bottle, that extra 200,000 dollars, and I'm digressing a little bit. So we're getting, we're, we're gaining on the roads. The quality of the roads in Rockville, we're gaining. It's just a matter of due diligence until we have it. Will this or will this not, this council will determine in the near future. So now, having said that, Mr. Bodie, do you have any other last comments?
You asked me where the funds were coming from, and I'd like to answer that question. And then I just follow up on my first comment was, and so the funds per, per core, from the road trails utilities commission was to come out of the, the funds from the speed project, of which there's gonna be about 140,000 left at the end of this year. The, the heartburn, and you, you sense emotion, and I, and I apologize, but the heartburn is to say, if we're gonna follow it. We're not gonna follow. We can't follow his plan. And I think that's the point I was trying to make. His plan's gonna show 11 and a half, 12, 13 million dollars to fix these roads. We can't follow his plan. And Mr. Mossman earlier's, you know, made some allusion, I think, to that same point. We're gonna fix the roads that need to be fixed. Every spring they blow up, and that's the ones we're gonna fix. I, I don't know how else to answer. I'm not saying no to the proposal, but if you put
That's where I'm sitting on the fence, is the weather has
But if you say we have to follow it, we don't have the funds to follow it. Not at 500,000 a year.
Yeah. That's a good point. That's a
Well, it is, but we gotta start someplace.
We don't know the inventory. We don't know the shape.
But you do get yelled at for not having a road plan. You up there get yelled at because you don't have a road plan. Is it worth the 12,000? Maybe.
So we're caught between the proverbial rock and a hard place on this.
Well, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go ahead with this, and I, I appreciate the staff's recommendation. I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. And that is, as it relates to item, department reports, uh, item number one, road pavement management plan, and that is council action 41. And that's where it's on 41. That's what we're looking at here, or something like that. Any other discussion as it relates to the motion that's on the floor? I sense that there is a call for a question on my part here, so we will go forward with the calling of the question. All those in favor of the motion to go forward with the road pavement management plan, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? None. Passed on a 4 to 1. Should we do roll call vote?
The record just showed, we rolled it, and if, remember Tipple will agree, he abstained.
Sure. That's, if that's legit, that we have a 4 to 1, and just the, uh, one vote in opposition was, uh, Mr. Tipple. Okay. Continuing. And now, before I leave this one though, um, the movement that goes forward, I think it's vitally important for us to have it in an upcoming work session, so that we understand how that the committee structure of the RTU blends in with this, assuming that we go forward with this at this point. But as of right now, that one voted, uh, the majority voted for that, that new commitment, and it was not out of reserve. It would be coming out of our regular funds.
Fund 215.
Yeah. Got it. Okay. Um, resolution 2025-15, crack fill project, uh, that's still under you, Justin, or?
Yep.
Okay. Please continue.
So we received two, uh, put together a bid package and a spec, and, uh, received two quotes for, uh, crack filling. Uh, basically, it's all, it'd be crack filling all the roads that were at new pavement in 2018 and 2019. Uh, the engineer's estimate, uh, was 20,000 based on basically a dollar per linear foot. Uh, low quote came in from Allied Blacktop at 12,950, so significantly under the estimate. Um, second quote came in at 17,000, 17,950 from Aztec. Uh, so it'd be our recommendation to go ahead and award that, uh, crack fill project to Allied in the amount of 12,950. And, uh, that's consistent with, RTU committee did also discuss that as well. Brian wants to add in anything on that? He certainly
No, you're pretty well covered. I know Gene was, and you were getting ready to get it put out on bids.
Are you okay with that, Gene?
Yeah, I actually thought it was gonna be right around a dollar.
Make a motion to approve. 12. Motion's been made to go forward on the
I'll second it.
Okay. 2020-15. Before I call the question, the scope of work that was advanced to the qualified bidders, that scope of work, I haven't seen it or some of that, but I remember from last year, the values crept up, or I think it was the quantities that crept up, and that caused in the bottom line, we only have a certain amount of dollars in the kitty for crack filling or something like that. So do we have the scope of work?
These roads are a little bit easier to estimate because they're newer, they're new pavements, so it was much easier to estimate quantities on them, because it's pretty defined on where the cracks are right now. It's, you know, one crack every 30, 40 feet, something like that. It's not all these spider or alligator cracking all over the place, which is what we were dealing with last year. So I'm pretty confident, we did bump, bump up the quantity a fair amount. Again, they get based, paid strictly based on the amount of footage that they actually do. So I'm, I'm pretty confident that we're, we're close on our corners.
Okay.
And so crude being as low as it is, would it be in our best interest to probably seal code or do a little more work this year?
That's an RTU suggestion to us and staff or something like that, I would think?
Well, we don't seem to care about the RTU much. We're gonna get 12,000 dollars in this plan, so give us some answers.
I mean, I guess I would say, like I said, preventive maintenance is important. Seal coating, crack filling is definitely important. So it's kind of whatever, however you wanna split your budget up into preventive maintenance versus your, your huge list of upcoming road needs and how you wanna split that pie. Um, I, I am a firm believer in crack filling and seal coating, there's no doubt.
I guess. That's why I was just wondering if it'd be something we could look into this year, because
Like Jerry commented, I think the crack filling, like I know the county started going out already, and the new roads, one citizen, the other day I spoke to, he said, "Fill them cracks now." On the new pavement, we get them cracks filled now. On the roads that were done in 18 and 19, they're not gonna heave and break or fart, part any further. Then a couple of years, then we'll do the seal code, come on over. The key one is the crack filling.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Okay.
So what, the crack filling?
So can we do some more crack filling?
So I sense, I sense at this point, this request that's brought forward for us to 12,950, the action item that we have, and so if down the road, there's additional crack filling that deemed, and it's not covered in this 12,950, Justin and our Public Works Department can come forward to us. And if it's a small amount, the city administrator has that right to do it, but certainly, we need to act on it. And I've gotten several calls this spring already, it says, and it was predominantly out in the stuff that was done two years ago, and I drove, everyone drove mild. There's a lot of crack filling, and it's, you know, 50, 60 feet repetitively, and it's neat and clean, and now's the time to do it. And that was some of the stuff two years ago. That was really amazing. Last year, it's amazing hardly anything. So anyways, the motion's been made. Second, any other discussions?
Yes. Just to piggyback a little bit onto that, Jerry, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, but how does that, does that get us into problem if we say, okay, this was cheap enough, we were planning on spending 20,000, we're 8,000 short? Can we have them extend that without getting into problems?
Yeah.
You can.
Just makes sense to me.
Okay. So, so I guess where Jerry and I think are going, Jerry, is, can we just do more?
The problem is, most of our roads aren't just alieno-cracks. They're
I understand that, but I think with you, with some discretion, you can probably have them do some more work.
If possible, we could look at the next probable, possible candidate.
If it helps us kick that proverbial can down the road, it's a benefit, right, Jerry?
Absolutely.
We can, we can look, uh, members, but I, I'm not sure right now where we would go next.
We could, we could give them a dollar amount with Marty's recommendation, and if they think there's a road there that could use it, have at it.
Yeah, but if you give them a dollar amount, they'll take every six
I'm talking about you two. You guys.
You get the dollar amount. You don't tell them the
You don't tell them.
Just a second here, gang. We have a motion and a second on the floor, and that's subjective. And our city administrator, including our Public Works, has discretionary movement. So if it does, and it comes in between higher than 12,950, I'm gonna be the first one that's gonna ask, where did the creep come from? And then somebody will have to report that and say, if it went over 12,950. Now, if it's incidental, nickels, dimes, quarters, or even a round number, that's not a problem. But if it goes over a lot, then we have a dilemma, because that's not what we, as a council, gave a directive. So Marty, uh, Mr. Bodie, comment, and then we'll call the question.
With your permission, Mr. Mayor and members, we, if you approve this, which I sense you will, we'll bring a, a secondary quote for you to look at the last meeting of the month. I think that'll give Justin and, and Gene some time to go out and put a recommendation for you to consider with a estimated dollar amount before they give it to the contractor. And just to finish up on Jerry, Jerry wants to know, with the fuel prices going down, do you wanna consider seal coating this year and borrow into next year? That was his point. He called, apparently, fuel oil has taken a dump.
Mm-hmm.
You may be money smart, and this isn't my recommendation. This is entirely up to you if you wanna borrow next year's money and try to take advantage of the low fuel prices. I think that's what Jerry was
Makes sense to me. If the engineer thinks it's feasible to do it, let's do it.
And, good point. And I think that flexibility, the only thing I would do is, is if in fact that there are roads that, the obvious ones, the scope of work that was created for these specific roads, that's, we're voting on here shortly. If there's others that are low-hanging fruit, and we should be doing a road tour, would really put that in place until, if that decision is made, rather than at the next, uh, upcoming workshop, we can talk about it, but that decision should be made after we have a road tour.
We wanted to wait till frost was coming out, or was out, so
It'll happen any day now. Okay. So to that end
Can you and I talk, and we'll set it up, and we'll call the rest of them?
Yeah. And then try to get that rolling as soon as it's feasible for us to have an appropriate time for a road tour.
It was my pocketbook, that 12,000 dollars had been put off till this fall for that study and been put in seal coating.
Yeah. But I sense that we all agree that there is an opportunity for us to capitalize on the volume. So let's call the question. All those in favor of that motion for the 12,950 crack filling, and that's 2020-15, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? None. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Uh, Stickney Hill, you're still on the docket there?
Just an update on Stickney Hill Dairy. Um, the flume meter, uh, manhole is installed. Um, currently, where it's at is, is Stern's Electric needs to get the electric service from the transformer, which is on the, I'll call it on the north side of the Stickney property on their driveway. Um, they need to get that installed back over to the, over to the flume meter, and they do not wanna install that until after frost comes out of the ground. Um, so they are estimating right now, uh, approximately mid-April that they would be there to do that. So, um, that's kind of where it's at right now. The electrician is ready to go. The panel is ready to go. Um, so they're ready to install that anytime. Uh, just basically kind of waiting and coordinating when the electric service is there. Uh, there is an option to spend some additional money and, and have our contractor install it, um, with, you know, going through the frost, but, you know, it's probably another 35, it's about another 3,500 bucks, so.
But where we're at in the season, I think it'd be wise for us to, that, we waited this long. Why would we pay frost heave or frost charge if it's just a matter of the Lord heaven it happened in short order or something like
That's kind of my thought too, and hopefully they get all three even before mid-April. And so
Okay. To that end, do we have any other concerns as it hands out with Stickney Hill? Is it just FYI or something like that? Are they making payments to us periodically for, and that's a
With some sort of exceptions, yes.
Okay. But that's not a council action, and I, I think there's still, uh, pending litigation or something like that, as I understand it. So, yes.
If I could, after, uh, item nine, after 9A3, if you could insert, uh, 9A4 legal? I should've asked this before, but
Yes, you should have. Okay. Well, the chair will, will yield, and as long as Sue is here and it's got something relevant, is it relating to city governance and/or Stickney Hill, I'm assuming?
No.
Okay. So it's not something that we need to address at this
She's gonna, she'll just have a couple matches.
Okay. So under other, if we can just, at that point, put it there, that gives me the direction that we can allow that. So Sue, you'll be addressing us under other. Thank you very much. Anything else, uh, Justin, as it relates to Stickney Hill?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
Great. Public Works report, uh, circulated to us, short and sweet. Uh, anything else? Gene?
Yes, no, just short and sweet. The only up, update I have for you, I did get ahold of Ziegler about renting that armor, like some, you remember, we rented it a few years back to do some brush cutting on the roads. Um, they're kind of getting out of it. They're not renting as many. They have two for rent now. Both are not in the state. They're out of the state. And their price went up to 3,400 dollars a week to rent one. Um, I can do some check and see if anybody else is willing to rent one, but not right now that I know of. Does save a lot of time for tree trimming and such, but right now, there is not one available. Just an FYI.
I'm not speaking for Don, but two seasoned veterans up here that helped clean, uh, brush some time ago, this is the most unique way to do it, not the old-fashioned way about there getting a couple of old timers to do that.
Well, I know, I know of a township that has one of those outfits, Jerry.
Will they rent it to us?
I don't know. I could ask them.
Why don't you guys talk? Okay. Thank you. Comments, questions of the council as it relates to our Public Works? Seeing none. Moving along. Um, we will now go to administration, LMC-sponsored resolution supporting infrastructure, and that is on council action packet number page 127. And part of that is, uh, due to, possibly to Harstead versus City Woodbury, uh, Harstead being a primary investor of some land out here in Rockville, uh, that is in the early stages of developing, and there was a lawsuit that came out of it, and Harstead was the prevailing one. And the League of Minnesota Cities is advancing to virtually all of the councils throughout the state of Minnesota to have a resolution supporting its infrastructure accountability. And you'll see all the whereras's that are in there. This was a late-breaking thing, and, uh, I don't know if it was ever brought up before, but they've worked on it. And Mr. Bodie said, can we put that in there? And can you speak on it for or against the league in their policy manual that's created every fall? Strongly feel that if we don't have legislation to change, then cities can be tested to see if in fact that we have a right to go and assess the benefiting property holders and for assessment. And there's where I'm gonna ask Susan, please chime in if you would, to make sure that what I just stated now therefore be resolved by the council to the City of Rockville, supporting legislation. Are you familiar with this legislation and/or care to chime in on it, Sue?
I, I have briefly looked at some of the league, um, publications on it, so I am in favor of passing this resolution.
Okay. And Mr. Bodie, to try to convince us to make sure it's not me sitting here on my soapbox or something like that.
Well, I haven't heard which way you're leaning. I, I know I have
We have to.
I have, I, I, well, good, then I know which way you're leaning, and so then I'll take the opposite side and just say that my limited knowledge is, I'm a little reserved, because I just don't totally understand what we're asking the legislatures to do. Justin helped me a little bit. Uh, normally, if I, if I can sum it up, and then I need you to correct me if I'm wrong, which I know you're, you're not shy to do. So when you do a street improvement, we, we're allowed to assess the abutting property owners, a certain percent of that.
In residential, not commercial. It's in residential.
Okay.
Yeah.
In this case, if you do an improvement, and there is not an abutting property, but a benefiting property owner in the nearby area, is that a true statement that this resolution is asking the legislature to authorize cities to assess them, even though they're not abutting the project? Is that the short of it, Mr. Mayor?
True. And I, and this was circulated by the League of Minnesota Cities to True. And this was circulated by the League of Minnesota Cities, so I believe all of us, I don't know if everybody gets it, but it's in the...
I was looking at Sue.
Fact sheet.
Me, too.
Fact sheet.
Did I, is that kind of what it was?
I don't think you have a point right, Marty. What we're looking at is, when you have residential development, and it has impacts beyond, it has impacts on roads and the use of roads beyond the actual development. And how do we, how do we pay that? Can we go back to the developer? Because he's creating the need to expand roads outside of the development leading into the development. So, can we pass on some of those costs of expanding outside roads that are serving the development to the development property?
Is this a good thing?
If I could just quickly, this was from the league's fact issue, and then the problem, if I can, it's one paragraph. When a new subdivision proposal is presented to a city by a developer, city officials consider how that development will connect with the rest of the community through new city streets, or how the added capacity will impact existing city streets. Many city planned streets work years in advance, and new development creates additional demand. However, legal interpretation of the current law does not allow for cities to collect fees from developers to help pay for these future investments. That is the fact sheet that was presented to those of us that are on the policy committee. That is currently. And then there's pros and cons, and I'll gladly talk about it. And there's, it's gone through the Senate, and it's gone through the House, but it's going to be, no, it's going to go to the subcommittees, but it's going to the full House on March 30th, which is the deadline for it to either dies if it doesn't go through forward. So, the intent is to get as many of these resolutions from the council to hand out. And if it passes here tonight, it'll be forwarded by Mr. Bodie directly to our senator and to our representative and to the league staff so that they know who it is. And then the league, next week, will be down at the, day at the legislature on the Hill, and will be lobbying for it. So, if the City of Rockville turns around and says, no, we are not in favor of this resolution, in my good faith, I could not go out there and lobby for it, even if I serve on the policy committee. So, it's very important, in my estimation, that we get as many city councils to see that. Because if not, then all the taxpayers have to pick up the tab for those new additional taxes that are out there instead of the developer. Now, in another chapter of my life, I was a builder developer. And in those days, when I was a builder developer, I paid for it. So, nothing has changed. But we didn't have the right. The city doesn't have that right to do it right now. And I sense both of you nodding that head. That says, today, we do not have that capacity as a city council to go and assess for those future streets that are out there. You can't go to the developer. And that's what Harstead's one was. It says, oversizing of sewer water. Yes, I sense...
Just one rule might help, a point of clarity, is it's simply a tool in the toolbox that the city can use. They don't have to use. There's no fee associated with it. That all of a sudden developers are going to get charged fees. It's still up to the local jurisdiction to determine what kind of fees you want to impose on which developments, and how you do it has to be done in an equitable and fair way. But it's not, just because the legislation is passing this, it's just simply providing cities with a tool to be able to use.
Good point.
So, this resolution is to support lobbying at the city to get bar change. That's what this is about?
That's correct.
Got you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion and second to advance the resolution that we have in front of us as it relates to the supporting infrastructure accountability. Additional discussion, sensing none. All those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Seeing none. Passed. Okay. We now go into Council Action Appropriations, allocations, and transfers. That's on page 128. We're getting very close to the end. Mr. Bodie, anything that you need to share with us?
Pretty standard, Mr. Mayor. Year-end adjustments to the budget. That reflects the action you took during the year of 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Council Action Appropriations, Transfers. Moving stuff from one account to the other count or something like that, and it takes council action. So, any other discussion, sensing none. All those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Seeing none. Passed unanimously. Under other, Sue, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, you probably noticed, I have somebody sitting next to me. I wanted to introduce Liz Hallett. She is our newest associate at Jovanovic Deegan Affin. And so, she will be backing me up and Tom Jovanovic up on our city attorney work. So, you might see her at a few future meetings. So, I just wanted you to meet her in advance and be nice to her.
Apologize for putting it all the way to other. That's late-breaking news. That should have been one of the first things that we talked about tonight. But thank you, Sue. Thank you.
Welcome.
Yes, welcome. This is the governance team up here, along with staff, along with a great additional support with our engineering and our legal counsel. So, welcome, welcome to the governance team.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Before we do, can we just quickly workshop items that are coming forward for agenda items? Please advance those to Mr. Bodie as you're progressing. And I'll throw one of them out here right now already, IPS, which was that innovative power system that's looking at setting up a solar. I believe he was here last month during the open forum. He contacted Mr. Bodie and myself, and he made another follow-up call to me. And what he's looking for is, and I gave him a spot where I thought would be a great spot for solar, but why get into it tonight? And that is the residual land behind Tim Gross's. There's eight acres of great savanna forest land with very few trees. It would be a great spot for a solar, and then the city would get that benefit. But it's nothing that we should make a discussion on tonight because we're not well-versed on it. So, we should see if we get a nod from the five of us to have him come in for a workshop meeting, half-hour max, 15, 20 minutes, whatever it takes or something like that. What's the wishes? I think it's a golden opportunity for us to get non-tax dollars to come in, long-term commitment, 20 years, I think it is. But it's certainly landus in their idol right now.
Have them come in?
Invite them in?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Mr. Bodie, that's one of the things. And then we talked about the tour already. And then the address, zip codes, we really never did much on it. So, if that's something that can be put back on the agenda, and if it works, great. If we can get people together. And if not, then we'll just kick the can down the road. So, now...
And motion, it's already been made.
Motion's been made. Second, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, council.